Okay, trustee Veras, whenever you're ready.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. And if we can do a quick roll call, please.
Trustee Wellner.
President.
Trustee Fong.
Here.
Trustee Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Hoffman.
Here.
Trustee Moreno.
Here.
Trustee Bella. Absent. Trustee Veras.
Here.
Student trustee Geronimo.
Here.
Thank you.
And trustee Hoffman, would you lead us in a flag salute?
Sure, the day that I take my flag down.
That's why I was looking towards you. I was waiting for the flag in the background.
Is this the nonviolent transfer of power?
Yes.
The flag goes down and it goes up on Steve's anyway.
Place your right hand over your heart.
Oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States of America.
And to the republic. For which it stands.
With liberty and justice for all.
Would you like me to sing like Lady Gaga right now?
Yeah.
Jennifer Lopez, Jennifer Lopez.
Oh, she was amazing.
Okay, well, no, I see trustee Bella, are you on? I think he's coming on board. Can we go back to the shared screen of the agenda, please? Thank you. I believe trustee Bella is on, so as soon as he's on, we'll note him for the record. Can you get a... Well, let me ask this, is there any objections to this? Everybody's on, if you can remove your microphones and they can see if there's any objections to the approved agenda, we'll do that with the consent of the board. If I see none, it's a pretty short agenda, so I didn't want to go through the formal process here. See no objections? We'll deem the agenda approved by consent. Public comments, I don't have any sent to me as listed. Do we have any that have come in for public comments? Krista Ordupe?
It looks like nobody's raising their hand and nobody signed up, so we're good.
Okay. So now we'll move forward to the board annual self-evaluation. I wanted to sort of frame a bit and give the chancellor a quick moment to introduce Noah. Colleagues, what we have in front of us is the annual board self-evaluation. It is presented in draft format. And that's because today will be the last piece of the evaluation. With your comments today, with our sort of general assessment and recommendation, we will pull together comments with a cover letter. This is something I've asked trustee Hoffman to work with me on since it was her last year being president and the carryover this year to reflect the board self-evaluation document. This is a public facing document. It's part of our accreditation process and obviously as we endeavor in accreditation this coming year, it is a critical and important document that reflects the board, its priorities, its functions, its activities. And but again, view this as a draft as presented now and with your comments, feedback, with some of the comments submitted in writing and obviously the ones that we hear verbal today will be compiled together for the official annual board self-evaluation. Like I said, it'll be the most recent one that'll be up in front of us as we get visited in our accreditation process. So sort of the opening general there and if there's, obviously feel free to ask any questions. It is an open process. It's an open public process and the document is accessible for the public. So know that this process will hold in that way. The chancellor process is an employee evaluation. It is a closed session document and a closed session conversation. But I did want to distinguish between the two things because as a board, obviously we're not under any of the rules for closed session, so it is an open and public process there. So chancellor, did you want to say anything? And then actually I should probably say, because through the majority of the past year trustee Hoffman, it was during your time, so I guess I don't know if you wanted to do a few short words here before we pass it on to Francisco and Noah to guide us through this process.
Thank you, President Veras. I just want to thank everybody for participating. And I want to thank you, President Veras, for stepping in and guiding us through this process. And I want to welcome you back, Noah Brown, and thank you so much for working with me to get this document ready and, you know, we got the process started prior to the holidays and I'm just excited to be here today. And chancellor, if you wanted to say a few words, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hoffman. Indeed, this is a continuation of the work that began last year. This board evaluation essentially is an 18-month evaluation. In fall of 2019, when we got together as a board, you all put together your ideas, thoughts and aspirations for what would be the board's goals for 2019 moving forward. So indeed, we deployed the talents and expertise of Noah Brown, who is the president CEO of the ACCT, the American Community College Association of Community College Trustees, excuse me, which is the nation's foremost professional development and advocacy group for the nation's trustees of community colleges. So we deployed his talents and his interest to assist us through a process to design the tool that was specific to the interests of LACC D and tabulate the results of which are in draft form as Mr. Ved has pointed out today. So today constitutes the opportunity for the board to discuss, evaluate, assess the results of the evaluation and look for areas of improvement. This process is something that our accreditation body, the ACCJC, requires that we do on an annual basis and indeed, we are doing that. And this, in its final form, as Mr. Ved has mentioned, will be a public document. So again, thank you to all of you for your participation in working through the holidays to get this done, to Noah and his team to tabulate and assemble the results, then presenting it today so that we can have a very focused conversation. We have designated about, to about 10:30-ish or so, to discuss this part of the program and then we will move into the other part of the agenda. So I'll just note that. But obviously we won't cut off time after discussion is substantive and moving towards informing the final board self-evaluation. So with that, Noah Brown, welcome to LACC D. You've been with us before on this very, very important day for the country and a very, very important day for the Board of Trustees. We're all looking forward to the new calendar year, new board leadership, new trustee and trustee Henderson, who's joining this team and this elected body. And we're very optimistic as well for our district. So with that, Mr. Brown, I'll pass it to you and please walk us through the self-evaluation of the board.
Thank you, chancellor. I do want to thank trustee Hoffman in particular for helping us work on this and put this together on behalf of the board and also to you, trustee Veras, who we worked with more recently to get this accomplished. I do want to thank every member of the board for completing the evaluation. I'm pleased we had 100% participation. And I know that we were on a pretty short timeline. We got this out, as trustee Hoffman said, before the holidays and we worked hard to get it completed. And then on the heels of this, as you know, we moved very quickly on the chancellor evaluation, which we'll talk about in the second session. So again, I appreciate all of you on the board for working hard and helping us to achieve this. I also would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to my colleague, Colleen Allen at ACCT, who is our director of presidential evaluation and assessment. She really did all the work on this, working with the chancellor and trustee Hoffman and then trustee Veras in putting all this together. So what you have before you is the draft summary report. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to share my screen and just kind of walk you through the highlights of this. The evaluation is really in two big components. One component looks at the way the board functions and how you work together as a team. It looks at a number of issues which I'll go through. And then the other part of this was to get a sense from each of you how you felt about the work toward the board goals that you created. Well, it's been more than a year now. I think when I was last with you, we put this together. So it looks at that as well. So I'm going to go ahead and share this now. And please stop me at any point if you have questions or comments. This is really your document and your process and this is designed to help you as a board to continue the progress that you're making. So I'm going to go ahead and share now. Okay, can everybody see it? Everybody seeing this?
Yes.
Oh, good. I get worried when I don't hear from anyone. All right, so let me go through this. Just a reminder that this is owned by you, the board. This is your self-evaluation. What's contained herein is information for you, for your use. Chancellor's already mentioned its importance relative to accreditation and functioning of the board. Obviously, table of contents, I'll just breeze past that. We, as we always do, we have information here about the process, what we do as your agent to help you get this done. It talks about the methodology and how we put this together. Obviously, I hope if you haven't yet, you'll have an opportunity to take a look at that. The first thing that we do is we show you the summary of all of the items across your evaluation. And as you know, we use a five-point scale. And so as you look across here, these are the specific averages from all seven of your responses for each of the items. And I will in a minute get into the items in particular. What I do want to note is that every item, on average, scored above three. Three being sort of the baseline. Anything below a three, I would say, would necessitate some scrutiny and some understanding of why it was related, ranked below a three. But you see, all of them achieved above a three and in many cases, approaching four or above, which is outstanding. I think that shows that there is a shared consensus among the board of some good work that is occurring. So I wanted to point that out. Moving forward, and I apologize, this is a continuation of all of the board averages. Now, the first part that you saw had to do with board function, adherence to ethics, how the board does its work through policy. This next section, which you see is a much more variance, looks at actual board policies and goals. And you see here, there's a fairly wide disparity or variation between how the board is feeling about goals. And I'll get to that in a moment. But I will point out, as you move to the right side of this chart, particularly the purples, where you see generally higher and in one case, the highest score. These items actually relate to how the board and the district pivoted during the pandemic and the civil unrest and the riot. So I want you to keep that in mind because I think that's significant. As we continue on, these are the highest rated items as ranked by all of you on the board. So if you look, these are pretty high scores. And let me tell you, having done a number of these, these are high scores. It's unusual that you would have all seven board members more or less coalesce equally on these items. So your highest rated items had to do with the board showing a support for student and employee achievements by recognition. Very important role of the board. Very high score there. 4.67. Another item, how well does the board feel it advocates district interests to state and national agencies and legislatures? Again, the board is feeling very confident in its role there. Again, a very high score. Next one, creating a chancellor's advisory committee on Black African-American student affairs. Very important goal. Very high rating there. I think the board feels that this was important and occurred in a good and productive way. And again, this one was not, I don't think, on our list when we developed the board goals initially. But then because of what transpired last summer with the civil unrest and the protests, obviously, this is something the board had to pivot to appropriately. The next one, board members attend various district programs and events. Again, very highly rated. This shows engagement by you, the individual trustees in the board, in being visible, being the face of the district and being engaged in activities that communicate a board engagement and that the board is paying attention to the things that matter within the district and the various constituencies for whom you are responsible. Next one, the board keeps the chancellor informed of constituent concerns. Again, a good, strong rating there. You know, this is an important role of the board. I mean, you do have an obligation to have open communication lines with the chancellor regarding concerns and issues that you're finding out about in your role as trustees. The next item, the board builds a positive image of the district. Again, a good, strong rating there. Again, this is a very important function of the board. I know we've talked about this. The board is highly visible. And how you do your business and how you conduct your affairs is critically important to maintaining a strong, positive image of the district and for the district to move forward in a proactive and productive fashion. Next item, a board adheres to stated ethical values and code of conduct, of ethical conduct. Again, strong ratings there. This is very important and this is an item that creditors look at very carefully. To the extent that you have board ethics, that you adhere to those ethics and that you behave as one body. Obviously, you have discussion in the deliberation phase, but when it comes to making decisions, how you conduct your affairs and how you speak with one voice and how you achieve consensus, very important. And as I said, creditors look very carefully at that. The next item that was highly rated, information technology supported moving the organization remote during the COVID-19 emergency. Again, this was an item that you had to pivot to last spring. This is not something that we had talked about when we designed the board goals with your support. So again, the board feels pretty good about the pivot there and the transfer or the moving to online learning and education. By the way, I'm sure you know, you weren't alone. Virtually every one of our colleges had to pivot to an online environment with little to no notice. And so obviously, that was critical. Next item, board members expect the role of the chancellor as the link between the board and staff. Again, I think the board, for the most part there, strong rating acknowledges that. You know, the board is responsible for the mission and the sanctity, if you like, of the entire district. But the board retains an employee, in your case, the chancellor. And the chancellor's role is to carry out the goals and objectives of the board and to be accountable to the board. Very important role. Again, it's another thing that creditors look very carefully at. You know, is everybody in their lane? Is the partnership working the way it is meant to be and is everybody performing their duties as prescribed by board policy and ethics? So again, good, strong rating there. Next item, the board adopts policies that guide the administration of the district and monitors compliance. However, always leaving the day-to-day operations of the district to the chancellor and his staff. Again, a strong rating there. Again, a very important thing relative to board responsibility and roles. It's another area where the creditors tend to put their nose more under the tent in terms of making sure that everything is being done appropriately. And again, there is this separation between what is the chancellor's duty and role and what is the board in terms of monitoring and assessment. The next one, board understands its fiduciary oversight role, specifically the budget, budget process, financial health of the district. Here again, the board feels fairly confident that not only understands its role, but it is executing its responsibilities and being a good fiduciary on behalf of the district. Next, expand LA College Promise Enrollment. Specific goal. Again, the board feels fairly confident that this is proceeding. So you see that there. This is related to one of your major goals relative to growing enrollment in the district. Next, plan for wholesale shift to remote learning and remote learning work environments. Again, the board, I think overall, felt pretty good that this occurred and is occurring. Again, this is another area where you had to pivot because of COVID-19 and it was not originally in your board goals. And you recall that the session that we did about a month ago, we looked at, thanks to the chancellor's work, what those pivot goals were and how they meshed with your goals prior to the pandemic. And as I indicated earlier, the overall composite scores show the board on balance felt pretty good and confident about the shifts and the pivots that had to be made, even though there were other goals that maybe got less attention and less was done, but you had to pivot because of the pandemic. And then lastly, develop and coordinate communication and safety protocols. Again, this was another pivot issue due to COVID-19. So those were your highest rated items as a group. I think what I'll do, President Veras, is pause now and see if there are any comments or questions for individual board members. Because again, this is a board process. This is about board assessment and board work and continuing to move the board forward. So it's important. If there are questions or comments or concerns, you have obviously the opportunity to put those out. So let me pause here and I would say, President Veras, if you would see if any of your colleagues have questions or comments.
Sure, let me run through everyone and we'll get a chance to, questions or comments or there's clarifications to be made. Noah, is there a, I know you haven't done the highest rated items, but is there a screenshot you can share that show all the subcategories?
All the categories, well, it's broken out, you know, by all these various items.
Yeah.
That's difficult.
Okay.
But everyone has a copy of this. It shows the composite across all items, but that's a lot of items, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's do this. And trustees, you can ask questions on any part of this document. Obviously, it's attempted to be grouped in sections at a time. So, you know, we'll figure out in the best way possible. You should have a copy that was sent to you by the chancellor in your email boxes beyond what's just presented here on the screen. So let me do this. Let me, let's start off with trustee Hoffman, questions or comments?
I just have one comment. Thank you so much for this overview. Noah, are you going to go through the lowest rated items the same way you went through the highest rated items? Or how are we?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to get that next, but I thought it might be good to pause in between each.
No, I agree. So I have no questions. Thank you for the overview of the highest rated items. Thanks.
Trustee Wellner, questions or comments?
None.
Okay, trustee Fong?
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to Noah for the presentation. I really appreciate all the highest rated items and everything that's been discussed so far. I look forward to the discussion. But I really appreciate all the great information. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Trustee Bella?
Not this time. Thank you.
Hey, trustee Moreno?
I have none.
Trustee Henderson, I know you weren't here for most of this year, but certainly I think you have plenty of observations from the several times that we saw you in the audience amongst at least a couple of meetings that we were together. So trustee Henderson.
No questions. Thank you, Noah, for this comprehensive report. It's very helpful to me. Thank you.
Okay, and then student trustee Geronimo, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so then let's, I think in the sort of spirit of what trustee Hoffman mentioned, I think, you know, this is obviously a tool to to look forward, to improve, to, you know, sort of pick points forward that need to be worked on a little deeply. So perhaps we can look at some of where we rate ourselves a bit lower and, you know, have a conversation about potential steps forward.
Okay, so let's turn to those now. So these are the items where we saw the lowest scores. And you can see, these are among the lowest. They're not all, but among the lowest. And, you know, the concern here is that none of these managed to achieve a three or above. So the first thing I would say is these are areas that I would suggest that the board continue to take a look at and reassess. I will point out that a lot of these were on the original board goals prior to the pandemic. So there may be reasons why some of these didn't progress as far along as you might have intended because you did have to pivot in a lot of areas. And I would just suggest, President Veras, that these are items that the board might want to discuss further this coming year and to make an assessment as to whether all of these goals remain on your list or whether some should receive higher priority than others and you make the adjustments accordingly. You know, you had quite a few ambitious goals before the pandemic. And so it's appropriate that you reassess and reevaluate. So among the lowest, I know the board had a goal of conducting an asset management study specifically around land development acquisition. You would call, I recall a lot of discussion around this when we discussed the goals. Obviously, perhaps because of the pandemic and the need to pivot, this didn't get as much attention as maybe the board intended at the time. Another item was to identify potential public, excuse me, private public partnerships to address the student housing issue and partnerships. There was a lot of conversation, interest around this as well. And again, I suspect because of the need to pivot to the online environment and to address issues of civil unrest and others and never mind enrollment challenges and fiscal challenges, this probably didn't get as much attention or progress as the board intended. Related was, you know, we talked about conducting the need for feasibility study around district education services and the center. Again, I would probably suggest that because of the pivoting to COVID-19, this is another item that This is another item that, um. Didn't get as much attention because other things, uh, were more important at the time. Uh, not the least of which, health and safety of your student population, your faculty, your administrators. Uh, and even trustees, as you had to pivot, uh, to conducting your business online. Another item, um, identify potential revenue streams relative to land, a development acquisition. Um, here again, um, I think, uh, as I've already mentioned. Uh, probably got a little less attention this year because other things became more important. Uh, with the pandemic. Another, uh, item that, uh, I know was, uh, important to the board. Uh, was to conduct a district-wide assessment of colleges. This was, uh, under the, uh, the frame of right sizing. You recall that we, uh, discussed quite a bit with the board when we set the goals about. Uh, right sizing institutions and making sure that everything, uh, was, um. Done appropriately, given your assets, uh, your various populations, facilities and whatever. Again, I suspect with the pandemic, um. Uh, not a lot of work was able to proceed there. But again, this remains a part of the board, uh, goals going forward. Um. Conduct, uh, college grant administration, uh, assessment. Again, I recall a conversation about making sure that all of your foundations, which you have plenty. Uh, and are dispersed around your campuses. Um, we're all, uh, proceeding according, uh, to, uh, the overall goals and objectives of the district. As managed by the board. Uh, so that, uh, remains something where work needs to occur. Uh, the next one, uh, monitor a district college milestone on a five-year strategic plan. This was under the, uh, interests of making sure that, uh. Not only did you meet enrollment goals, but you found ways of in growing enrollment. Again, I think with the pandemic, the number one challenge was maintaining enrollment as much as possible. Uh, which by the way, is what I understand relative to many other colleges and districts. Uh, you did pretty well, all things considered, better than a lot of other. Uh, institutions and colleges around the country. But again, um. Not achieving. The overall goals and getting to the point where you would develop those five-year milestones. Next one, uh, engage in college program viability studies, again, related to an enrollment. Again, I suspect that, uh. Uh, had to be, uh, paused for a certain bit, uh, while you dealt with other, uh, issues. Next one, assess and execute recovery plan for the LA Southwest College. Again, this was under the board's, uh, priority of right sizing. Um, and again, uh, I hate to belabor it, but I think with all the things you had to do relative to COVID nineteen. You know, this was another area where, uh, perhaps not as much was able to be achieved. The other item, a craft and, uh, post-student housing proposal, RFQ. If warranted. I know this was another, uh, interest, um, in terms of meeting, uh, student housing, uh, shortages. Uh, and again, um, you know, more work, uh, will need to occur there. Um. Next one, craft specific outreach plan for adult learners. Again, uh, another, uh, enrollment strategy. Uh, which probably, um. I don't wanna say took a backseat, but clearly, uh, moved down the list, uh, in response to the pandemic and, uh. Able to continue to serve your current student population. Next, uh, expand adult education, non-credit education, again, an enrollment goal. Um, next one, craft, uh, and post, uh, proposal for an RFQ. Around District Educational Services Center. And then related, uh, again, identify potential public, uh, private public partners. Related to, uh, district education, uh, services. So. Um, President Vares, these are the items that didn't, uh, even get, uh. Three or above on the ratings. These are items that I would, uh, respectfully suggest. Uh, the board should, uh, discuss. And take a look at as you move forward. Uh, in terms of, are these items that the board still feels, uh, are important in its strategic plan? Do you wanna change the relative weighting or importance of these items? But more importantly, um, figuring out with the chancellor and the administration. Uh, how to sort of bring more of these online while we're still in a pandemic situation. Um, it goes without saying that you guys, uh. Uh, tragically are in the epicenter right now, the pandemic in this country, particularly in LA. Uh, and so, uh, I think some thought will need to be given. To how you bring some of these back online. While you continue, uh, to do all that you can to protect the health and safety. Of your student population, uh, your facilities, your faculty administration and the like. So I'm gonna pause here again, uh, President Vares and, um. Allow you to, uh, have conversation with the members of the board. Uh, and to ask me any questions or, uh, hear any concerns that you might have.
Great, uh, sounds good. Uh, so, uh, colleagues, uh, in a, in, in, as a precursor to our comments here. Um, you know, we do have, uh, uh, our upcoming reset of our, uh, twenty twenty-one goals. Um, within the next few weeks. And so I think as, as we start looking at prioritization modifications. That, those kinds of things are there. Now, there are other things that are listed here are, um, also goals in progress. Um, and, uh, I know even this afternoon, uh, one of the things that's rated lower here, we're gonna have an updated presentation. Uh, from the staff and our study session today. So, uh, some of these things continue to be in, in, in process, but you know, in, in, in response to. Uh, Noah's comments and questions, um, you know, uh, there, there could be things that could be higher prioritized, lower prioritized, but. The, the, the function of today is to assess what we did over the last year. Uh, and, uh, sort of really set the stage for what we're gonna be prioritizing and doing over the coming year. Uh, so, uh, some of these things may continue to be high priorities, uh, focus of work, and some of these other things may also, um. Uh, gain a different sort of, uh, ranking for us, uh, in the upcoming goal, uh, setting, uh, session we'll do. Um, so, uh, with that, let me open it up, um, uh, for specific comments. Um, I think we have. Um, sort of the, the topic areas in three or four, you know, en- enrollment right sizing. Uh, lots of this, uh, in terms of the asset management, land acquisition components. And if you wanted to, uh, view student housing as potentially part of that space. Um, those are just the broad, uh, categories that seem to fall in the same spaces there, but, uh. Uh, but let me open it up. I see trustee Valner with his hand up first, so let's, let's kick it off with him.
First of all, let's, uh, let's acknowledge something extremely important. That when the chancellor and the district, uh, pay for food, um, we, we are kinder. Uh, what, I just wanna make sure and say that from the, from, from the beginning. Cause I'm, I, I'm, I'm ordering something good today for, for, for lunch, so it, that's important to always, to always say. Um, but all, all joking aside, but I'm not joking on that. Um, he, here's, here's my take. I, I think that trustee Moreno is gonna, is gonna kill me for this, but. Um, we, the staff that we have, I believe their capacity is fine. What I don't think we have, we do not have sufficient capacity. Um, in terms of numerically to handle all this stuff. We just don't. Um, I think we lost, um, Larry, we lost Bob, you know, both about a year ago. And no matter how good, um, you know, our HR department are, our general counsel, our, our, our facilities person is. Um, you, we need a probably a group, uh, a larger group or outside capacity to help with a lot of this stuff. Um, let me give you an example, um, conduct asset management study of, of our, of our land, right? Um, this, a, a firm could do this relatively quickly. It's not that big of a deal. It's actually just a lot of, 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 of charts. Um, the, the, um, private public partners, I mean, some of that's occurring. Um, monitoring college enrollment, um, even though we've begun documenting. I think as, as, as board members, we do need a lot of specific metrics. Because all this stuff. Can't be done in a qualitative way. I mean, it can, but we've gotta be able to judge very quickly. How things are occurring. And, you know, and I would recommend, I would recommend filling or opening certain positions to get a lot of this stuff done. Um, because I, I think even with the pandemic, Noah, I, I completely disagree with you. You know, we can do a lot more. Folks are able to be, to, uh, to do stuff. Where I also disagree is that, um, our enrollment can be increased. I, I just think we haven't figured out the narrative. And we need, I, I believe, a team to figure out what that district narrative is in order to make that. So I understand. No one needs to give additional data, yes, and, you know, uh, Noah in Philadelphia, you know, these schools are lower enrollment. The question is, maybe they're not lower enrollment, maybe we're not giving the narrative. You know, what are the community colleges that are, that the enrollment is actually going up? What are they doing right? And how can we do that? But the biggest thing, trustee, uh, 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 Vedas and, and, and board members, in my opinion. Is that we don't have the current capacity. Let me just be very clear. Our staff, I think, one, has improved significantly. And, and we have, and maybe I'm using that, saying the wrong thing. We have the intellectual capacity. We don't have sufficient, sufficient, um, human capital in order to get this done. I do believe we do need probably an additional three to five people in order to get this done. That's it.
Okay, thank you, trustee. Um, next, uh, trustee Bella, questions or comments?
Thank you, President Vedas. Appreciate the opportunity to comment on this. Um. I do think that, you know, we, um, with all of this data, I think we. Definitely could, uh, benefit from trying to. See which, uh, of these, uh, that we have, um, you know, listed here in, uh, that could be. Clearly, uh, you know, demarked or. You know, uh, at least highlighted that perhaps the campuses, each particular campus. Um, could handle some of this, uh, cause I do believe there is. An issue of, you know, we're, we're a little bit, um, of a skeleton crew lately. Um, so, you know, in kind of looking at the private public partnerships, I think. One of the, the bigger things is, we, we have to be, two things, one, have, you know, the communication. That's necessary to involve that community, so, um, you know, each campus is different. You know, I, I would love to see, uh, some more, uh, you know, P-threes and public-private partnerships and. Uh, partnering with student housing developers and all sorts of good stuff. Um, but I also would like to come from that college organically, um. And, you know, I'll, I'll give you a scenario, there was. At Pierce College, an interest from a Portos, an interest of building some. Faculty housing, which at that time we had an interim president, um, who, who thought it was a good idea. Um, you know, kind of came to the district and was told by, you know, someone at the district. You know, don't even try it, the faculty. And the trustees don't want any type of, of, you know, retail in our land. Or, or housing, um. And, you know, I just read, uh, a, a big study that Lane put out. Where, you know, Lane is saying for, you know, government agencies to not lose. Their land because, you know, when we give it to developers, it's gonna. You know, uh, be a deficit for taxpayer, or, you, you know, one can argue that obviously with incentives of jobs and so on and so forth. So. I think clear communications need to happen now, right? So. If the board is really serious about doing some of this. Let's be, let's put, you know, honesty in front of us in, in good faith, because. Otherwise, the way I see it, people are getting mixed messages. Um, and so communication is gonna be very critical. I'll be seeing that, you know, from a critical eye. Whether or not we're being truthful. Um, are people being, for example, at LA City College, where, you know, we had. The potential of having a small pilot of student, of students being able to, um, you know, sleepover. I mean, you're just yesterday, you know, we were discussing, um, you know, in agenda setting. Uh, the need for patrol, uh, to our construction sites. Why is it that we can so easily provide? Patrol for a bond program and spend millions of dollars, albeit it can be spent by bond dollars. We can also use bond dollars if we. Were to incentivize housing around our, um, or at least purchasing of land, um. And creating a land bank. So. Are we sending mixed messages that we can afford, you know, private security? For a construction program? Or spend twenty-three million dollars, uh, thirty-three million dollars with sheriff, but we can't put. One patrol car to help this pilot? That the city of LA wanted to do at LA City College? Are we being hypocrites? Um, are we telling that college president mixed messages? Well, faculty doesn't want it. Trustee Bella doesn't want it. Chancellor doesn't want it. So. I'm not even willing to entertain any of this until there's some honesty between. The district and our community colleges. Because I think that's what's gonna be needed for us to advance any of these things here. Um, you look at it, it's all student housing, it's land acquisition, it's. Enrollment, it's very, you know, driven by, you know, colleges and what they would wanna do, but. If we come and then we put the kibosh on it and, and, you know. Pop the balloon or, you know, burst their bubble, then no one's gonna try again to do anything. So. I think we need to be extremely careful with communication. Be honest about it. You know what? We don't wanna do housing for the next ten years. We don't even wanna think about it. Let's do it. You know, let's be honest. I don't, uh, it doesn't harm me, it harms more the students. If we're not in the business of doing. Student housing, then we're not in the business. That's fine. We can move on. So. I, I don't even wanna entertain any of this until we're being very clear within ourselves. We have a. A come-to-Jesus talk as trustees about what we really want, because then this is a waste of time for me. You know, and I don't appreciate ways, people wasting my time. So that's my point of view there. Sorry, I'm being blunt, but. You know, that's just my personality and I hope I bring some clarity to a lot of this, so. Thank you.
Uh, okay, um, well, let, let me run through the, I know trustee Valner's got his hand up again, but let me, let me run through the whole. Was it in any comment or can I go through everybody and come back to additional questions?
I promise it'll take ten seconds.
Ten seconds, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I think, um, uh, first of all, is it, uh, are, are, are we in public session or is this private? I forgot.
This is public session.
This is public session.
Okay, no, no, uh, cause I was going to say David versus trustee Bella. Okay, so. Uh, so I, you know, I think trustee Bella brought up something that I'm not, in my three and a half years, I'm not sure anyone has brought up. Um, because I've, I've, I, you know, I've, I've looked at our strategic plans before and I really haven't. I mean, even though I vote for them, I mean, I really think like, I, I, I really haven't seen. The connection among the different levels at LA CCD. And I think what trustee Bella is saying is that, look, you know, we may declare something. But if you have different levels that are going to be fighting us. You know, let me be very clear. We wanted, and ISS and the board said, we wanted ethnic studies expansion. Um, would call it in, 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 uh, in, in two thousand nineteen. And it was, it was, it was, you know, we got pushback. Um, and the same, the same folks who gave us pushback at that time, all of a sudden. Uh, you know, agreed with it, you know, one year later when the protests are occurring. You know, so I think, I think that connection between what, you know, what people will. Kind of secretly not allow versus what we know we're willing to do. And also trustee Bella brought up an important point, that sometimes people make up the fact. Of what we agree and not agree to, including the chancellor, by the way. Some people will say, the chancellor doesn't like that. How do you know? You know, and sometimes people straight out make things up, and that's very important. And that's one component that we have, I, I'm not sure we've discussed in the time that I've been here. I know it took more than ten seconds, uh, trustee Vedas, but you already knew that.
All right, uh, sounds good. So, uh, let, let's, I wanna give everybody a chance to sort of make comments and. Uh, and it, and I, and again, I do remind, I wanna remind, so knowing the first couple of comments, some of the things actually may, um. Uh, be part of a larger dialogue, uh, when we reset the next set of goals. Um, uh, and, or whether it's confirming these, the middle process, or, or moving things up and. And/or whether it's confirming these, the middle process, or moving things up and down. But I think those, those, those comments are sort of really, you know, applicable to the conversation of work plan and how we view this next set of goals here. So trustee Hoffman, questions or comments?
Thank you, President Verraz. So I, well, I think what I would like to do, which is why I asked about the lowest rated items, and you kind of just said it in your last comment, is we should probably look at these items and move most of them forward into our next set of goals. But I don't want the important ones, there are some critically important ones in here, and I don't want those critically important ones to get lost, so I'm not sure what the process is of sort of bringing back, like when I look at number thirty, conduct college grants administration assessment, I think that's critically important. That's critically important to the work that we did in the last eighteen months, and we probably shouldn't forget that we still, it's rated fairly low, and I think a lot of that had to do with the pandemic, but we shouldn't forget that that was something important to all of us. And then some of these other ones, we really need, as trustee Vella said, to sort of moving forward, have a broader discussion, I mean, in a deep discussion as a board, to find out, are we, are some of these still important to us? Or can some be moved out to the future? Or are some of them just something that won't be feasible to do in the next five years? So with that, Noah, maybe you could help us, how do we pull out the ones that are, that are, that are important to the mission of this district and to our operations? And then sort of park the other ones for a future conversation when we set our goals going into the next year?
Okay. That's good comments, and we'll save some feedback from Noah and the chancellor right after this. So let me, let me jump over to trustee Baugh.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to colleagues and everyone for comments. I kind of see this in a few bucket areas, I see that in challenging times of enrollment, and I know that all my colleagues and the chancellor and the senior administration and all the colleges are very focused on enrollment. I think as we come out of this COVID-induced recession with the new administration being sworn in today, and with the opportunities for grants, we were just made aware yesterday that there's an aviation workforce grant that Westlake College might be applying for. So there's a lot of different moving parts that I think in the next six months here and a few years that we can address a number of these issues that are on this topics, and to my colleagues' comments, I think, doing a deeper dive, and I know we have a retreat coming up soon, to really look at these goals as a board, as an organization. And I know when we had our retreat at Valley College a year, year and a half ago, we talked about some of these particular items, including student housing partnerships. And I feel that on some of the campuses, there are those opportunities where it might be a good fit and that folks are looking at those potential opportunities. So I think doing a deeper dive and a campus-level dive, and engaging our senior leadership, the chancellor and everyone, and as well as the college presidents also in this process, more so that we have those opportunities to engage. And then when we look at public-private partnerships and revenue streams in these challenging times, I think we have to look at all avenues to look at opportunities to bring additional revenue, so when we look at other campuses, whether it's Orange Coast or Toritos, those districts have done some partnerships on housing, and I think as an organization, we've talked about that at a high level. But I think we need to get more to the assessment part and asset management has been referenced here. So I would support those efforts to look and look at how we can do a deeper dive on these initiatives. And then lastly, on adult learner piece and workforce development and career tech, I know it's not delineated here, but it relates to enrollment. And I think with the shift in administration, with the work that's being talked around immigration, I think, you know, we are the largest district serving DACA students and document students and immigrant students, and really looking at how we can get additional opportunities to grow enrollment from that standpoint as well. So those are some critical areas that I think kind of all intersect and connect when we talk about enrollment issues, talk about student housing, and when we talk about additional public-private partnerships. So I look forward to the deeper dive conversation on these issues and how we can do more assessments on these to proceed on these issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Moreno, questions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple. I'd like to know, you know, the, I don't think we need to be as concerned about these low scores as we're appearing to be. One of the questions I had is that, when you ask me whether or not we have conducted an asset management study as an example, I may not have known that you have done that. As individual board members, we have somewhat limited knowledge about any and all these matters. So there it may have been. But if I marked on my evaluation that item, I said, I don't know, is that calculated in the average score? That's a question I have to begin with.
Noah, is it something you can clarify?
Noah?
Yeah, I mean.
If I mark, I believe, well, the last item was, I don't know, is that included as a, a part of a lower mark on averaging?
I don't believe so, if you, if you say, I don't know, in other words, you don't answer it one way or the other, I think we average among those that did respond. That's my.
Because it's important, because I dare to say many of us don't know the answer to these questions, is we may not have the knowledge of what we've done in that regard. But that's one issue. I'm a little concerned about incorporating a, I don't know as a negative in this regard, because very often, I find that identifying these issues, whenever you start talking about identify, conduct, monitor, well, somebody's changing, would you move it back down to the lower end? Somebody's moving it.
Sorry.
When you, when you look at identify, those are action, action words, but they don't necessarily assume a result. And a lot of times, I think people are misunderstanding a study like this. We're asking that you have, let's say, that there's going to be results from this action, as we would like to have it concluded. Then in fact, this is asking whether or not we have engaged in a discussion or some review. If as a result of that, nothing transpires, that doesn't mean that that hasn't occurred. So sometimes we put items on the agenda in such a way to assume that when the action is not taken into, in a fashion as we would like to design, as a result of that identification, that we will then find that to be unmet. So if I, if I put enrollment on here, let's say assessing enrollment, well, we probably have, we've done that. But if it's a low enrollment, that's another matter. But if you were to ask me whether we monitor it, the answer is yes. Some people may assume I'm monitoring that, that there is other actions as a result of that word monitoring. So I think we get a little confused here when we start putting items on the agenda that assume a different result. That in fact, what we're looking for here is whether the process has taken place. If the process results in something that maybe you're not in favor of, that isn't a negative, that's a positive in the sense that we did review it. So I, I don't, I think we're a little bit too harsh on ourselves if we say we didn't take any action, well, the review of the matter may not have required any action. We may not know, the other part of this, we may not know we reviewed it and, and decided to take no action. But that's not incorporated in this question. And I think sometimes when people, especially when you have items like engaged, assess, identify, we may have identified a variety of things. So like for instance, if we identified them, it doesn't always necessarily require that we have, in fact, incorporate them or acted upon them. The fact we've identified them doesn't mean automatically we will incorporate them into our actions. So we have to be careful when we say we really criticize ourselves for not taking this. I believe we may have done a lot of this. It may not have resulted in the decision we wanted, but that should be an indication that we haven't reviewed it. You understand my, my, my point?
Yeah, trustee Moreno, I'll jump in, and yes, I completely agree and concur with your points here. And some of it is the reason why I opened this conversation and dialogue about the actual goals and objectives themselves are held in a different space. This is, of course, to evaluate our process, how we.
That's right, exactly.
adhere to things and, and how we're assessing. So, you know, there's a little bit of this of, of, there's a little bit here about how we're assessing goals, at the same time, how we're assessing our function as a board and our responsibility as board members. And, and, you know, we didn't want to have those two things connected, because the process of how we make goals and the process how we, you know, assess them and assess our progress of it, that's very significant for the behavior of the board and the actions of the board. But sometimes the exact, you know, goal themselves probably need a little space to determine whether they come up, stay high on a priority chart or.
Let me interrupt you for a second, if you don't mind. I, as an example, assessing, what's the one identifying property here? For student housing, we've evaluated that in countless meetings. We have workshops, we have consultants, we have reviewed that multitude of times. It may not have resulted in the action a particular board member wants, but one shouldn't say that we haven't evaluated it. But we have, it may not result in the results they want, but it has been evaluated multiple times. Those are the kinds of things I'm talking about. When I mark something that I didn't know, I marked as I didn't know. But if, if, by saying I didn't know, it reduces the average in this list, then we do have a problem.
Absolutely, absolutely, I appreciate the comments and I echo them as well. Trustee, do you have any other comments or I'm going to pass the talking stick around here, so any other comments you'd like to make here? Trustee Moreno?
No, no more comment.
Okay, sounds good, next I have.
I did want to quickly just, and I don't know if trustee Henderson spoke yet about this.
She's next, she's next.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I have, I have left on the list for trustees, trustee Henderson and student trustee Hidoni Mo. And then if there's any other trustees that want to make an additional comment, you can just raise your hand, so. Next trustee Henderson?
Thank you, trustee Verraz. You know, of course, I wasn't here during any of this, but I do look forward to us reviewing some of these issues in terms of how they fit with what we say are our priorities. You know, sometimes your goals and your priorities don't always match. And to, and I think it was trustee Bueno or Vella that stated that it doesn't seem as though overall, our, what we say are our goals and priorities kind of interconnect with what we say we want to see in terms of student success. And I look forward to reevaluating some of this and reviewing it to make sure that as we move forward and continue to goal set, that our, our, our true priority is student success and engagement, and that this reflects that, because I agree with trustee Vella, if we're going to say, if we're putting things on this list that are goals and they aren't truly things that we plan to do or do in a particular time period, then we need to reevaluate that, because we have so many goals here and so many things that we are saying are priorities that in terms of action and looking at the average of these scores, they haven't been. So I look forward to the conversations that we'll have in the future in terms of reevaluating this.
Thank you trustee Henderson, student trustee Hidoni Mo, any questions or comments?
Yes, hi. So I want to talk, I don't want to talk against anyone here, because what I want to see is unity on this board. But I do think that having the pandemic as an excuse is not valid, because if these same numbers have shown before on, when it comes to student housing or student enrollment, it is, it worries me a lot, especially as a student, because yeah, we should, if, we shouldn't leave these numbers like this for the next, the next couple of months or, or the next year, because the top section talks or says a lot of good things about the board, but this low section, where it actually also involves students directly or impacted students, it's not really good numbers. So that's all I want to say, and yeah, so I hope that after the pandemic ends, if many of, if some of us here are actually thinking that the pandemic is a reason for not accomplishing these goals, I hope after the pandemic ends, these numbers could go up really quick. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, student trustee. I'll offer a few comments for the record here, and I'll say this, you know, most, most of this document was built off of sort of the framing of, of, of our sort of broad goals from last year. I, I would note that like one of the, one of the strengths that we scored, I mean, we're talking about lowest rated items, but one of the strengths that we scored was the pivot, was the sort of mid-session pivot because of COVID to, to deal with the issues in front of us immediately. And, and I know that at least, at least in terms of a couple of these items, there are, there is, so it's a timing of it, and to speak to trustee Moreno's perspective, it's these are things that we may not know necessarily yet, because there are things that should be presented to us, so those may change, you know, sort of quickly, but there is a couple of things that I think requires maybe like sort of deeper conversations with the board and deeper understanding of things. I think as we talk about, for example, rightsizing colleges, you know, the district-wide assessment, the Southwest in particular, and that sort of combination with, with, with enrollment. You know, the colleges will all be right-sized with larger enrollments. But, but, you know, we have this interesting sort of space of enrollments used to be so intimately tied to budget. And when, when our budget has been essentially relatively stable through the years, you're seeing in Sacramento at least some decoupling of hard adherence to enrollment to equal budget numbers. And so as, as a board, in terms of our process, when we sort of witness changes at the state, and mostly state, because that's the vast majority of our budget coming from there, of how that impacts us, I'm not sure if we really took this item of rightsizing and understanding sort of the growth and enrollment process in a really good context with the sort of changing nature of the way things were evaluated in the budget. And it's not to say that, you know, enrollment isn't important, it's not to say that rightsizing isn't important, it's to say that, you know, our, our step of how we evaluate and turn and change, I don't think we, you know, sort of put it on enough for us to sort of dig deeper into those areas. And I would say this too, apart from those items, when it comes to student, you know, the student housing or the land acquisitions or the asset managements, I think there's a piece of sort of communication that, that, that seems to be part of a gap here, understanding sort of what what types of governance processes we're under, I know like we sort of debate things and try to understand the shared governance piece that's in California, we have a DBC process, we have sort of the, the individual identities at times of individual colleges versus sort of district-wide initiatives. So all those things sort of come back and forth, that I think from a board perspective, you know, you know, some of these things could be sort of connected into how we communicate, how we understand sort of our rules, our precedents, what we're challenging. understand sort of our, our rules, our precedents, what we're challenging um as a board um in terms of the, the, the sort of nature of, of, and, and the past precedents. And uh, and trustee Buellner made an interesting comment about how, you know, we certainly saw several pivots. One of them in ethnic studies for sure, we talked about that and, you know, I remember sitting in the committee with him where it was a pretty um uh steadfast position that was, it was a difficult process and now we're moving pretty quickly. And some of it's sort of how we organize ourselves to do and, and approach that. But some of it's also because the, the, the institution has pivoted. So you know, to say that we're representative of the institution as a board uh is one thing to say that we're um uh members of the public that are, we're representatives, we're trustees, we're given a trust to represent uh the public at this institution and challenge the institution is another thing. And to see how those two, two things marry with each other um is, is sort of an interesting, it's, it's a process issue, right? It's a, it's a, we're not administrators of the college, we're trustees elected uh to voice opinions and to bring uh forth ideas from the places that we all come from as opposed to being, you know, exactly an administrator um or a constituent here. So um, you know, it, it's kind of interesting to see all these things and how they move and uh like, like, you know, I think all the comments uh that you've made all have sort of kernels of, of, of uh incredible incredibly important truths uh for us to, you know, sort of dig deeper into, you know, these lower-rated items. But there's also some stuff that were rated higher, that are, were rated higher, that are things that are in process, right? So even though this is just a frame of it, these are all, all the things on the higher and lower side. Uh, doesn't necessarily mean that we're totally satisfied with things. Uh, it's just that it sort of lands in this, in this area and there's a few areas that are in common. So um, so I see uh continuing comments, I see trustee Buellner with a hand up and then trustee Moreno. And if there's any others that wanna make additional comments before we uh start bringing this process to the wrap here, um, please raise your hand. So trustee Buellner.
Yeah, the, the, you know, I, I wanted to quickly, you know, um, you know, uh, talk about the, the asset component of, of, of why I, 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 and I was, I've been one of the one pushing that. Let me give you an example. Um, as at, at LA City College, um, we don't know, you know, there, there are many different properties on that campus. We don't have a complete mapping about what, with regard to what the rights are of the district on all those, on all those parcels of property. We know a lot of it, right? Um, we don't know, and I'm not gonna get into some of the specific ones because um we have to deal with those issues in closed session. But there are some properties that we might have covenants on, which would mean a right to go back on that property. Um, and you know, if, if, whether we're going to do any building on any property, either whether educational or student housing or faculty and staff housing, before that conversation occurs, we have to have an asset, an, an asset assessment to determine what are the basic rights of the district on those properties. Now, we have some of it and trustee Vettis has, you know, did that several years back. Um, but what, and, and the reason that, that I do believe that one specifically is important because if we begin the process of moving forward in one year, but our actual rights on that property aren't understood, we would have wasted an entire year in not knowing that. And so these are, these are some of, and, and I'm pointing that one specifically out because it's um, some of the other ones aren't exactly the same, uh, the same thing. And, and that's it on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Moreno?
Yes, I don't wanna, I wanted to get, uh, there was a comment made earlier about enrollment. Of course, you know how I stand on enrollment. Uh, I'm not satisfied at all with our current condition. But I had heard earlier by our consultant that we are not as bad as other districts. Uh, I'd like to know if there's information that he could provide to us. Uh, some document or what have you that could, you know, identify where the rest of the uh, the United States is on enrollment. Because uh I just looked at our current numbers and looks like we're almost 20% down, which is totally unacceptable. But in, in example on, let's take this as an example, we can monitor enrollment. And this is a, what I call a bureaucratic gobbledygook. We monitor enrollment in that statement and assumed that we're seeking to improve our condition or increase. But that's not what it means. It means that we just look at the, at the enrollment data. Now, the next step is what goals we set. And if we're setting goals of at least maintaining or increasing, those are the goals. But to assume that we've accomplished the task of, of dealing with our enrollment issue by identifying as being monitored, um, that, that is a little bit too great a conclusion. So I, I, I do think we need a lot more work in this regard. And maybe this is not the place to do it, but I wanted to make sure that I requested uh from our consultant a information about a statement about where we stand relative to declining throughout the United States for community colleges. Thank you.
Trustee Moreno, would you, would you wanna uh perhaps know, you can make a quick comment, but maybe there's a, a document or a study that ACCP has that you can send it over to him um uh in terms of having a physical um uh item to assess. So I don't know if there was a quick comment you wanted to make in response to that, but.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, a lot of this comes from the National Clearinghouse uh data and their latest report for two-year institutions on average, on average showed about an 18% decline, which was the most of any public institutions in higher ed. And if I misstated the enrollment at uh, in LA, I apologize. I was basing that off of what my understanding was uh in terms of that. But yes, I'd be happy to provide those data uh to the board. And you can see the national averages, you can also, uh, it's also, I believe, disaggregated by race, race and ethnicity. A first-time freshman age and others might be very useful.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so let's uh move on to the next uh sort of element here to discuss.
Trustee Buellner, can I ask a real quick question of Noah?
Oh, yes, sorry, go ahead.
Um, it is, um, I, I'm happy because I figured out how to raise my hand. So um, is what would be helpful? Right now, we know enrollment is down, right? We, we've heard that story. It's a true story, right? No one's arguing with that, right? We know that, right? Um, we get that, you know? It doesn't need to be repeated a zillion times. I think what would be helpful from, from, from you, Noah, specifically, and I'm being very specific because I'm being very specific and I know what I'm asking, is what, what are the best, some of the best practicings that, practices that are emerging on enrollment that are working? That are actually working. We don't need narrative opinion that are actually working specifics, the tactics on that. Um, and, and, and sometimes I think, you know, Noah, at least my frustration with ACCT is this is too general and, and the information isn't useful. Um, you know, so those, but, and also what are some of the trends on what is not working? That would be specifically helpful for us, our campuses and our presidents. And also I hope that ACCT or any other body is kind of like, you know, has a task force that, uh, that, 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 that is tracking, you know, some of those kind of average practices, you know, evolving trends as they're going. Because right now in the history of the United States, we've never seen such drastic changes in, in, in learning, right? So you know, you know, we shouldn't have to pay all kinds of consultants to figure that out. You know, you, you should be able to tell us what some of those are. But these general platitudes of things are going down, we get that, we know that, we're reading that. We need specific bullet points on what's working, not working and trends. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, President Veras, and I apologize for not putting up my hand, but I'm one of those that kind of isn't doing well in, in my virtual hand. I don't know where it is here.
But the body looks like, it looks like
Sorry, okay, I did find it, sorry. Um, I, I do wanna just kind of leave us with this. Um, you know, this is good for me, at least for us to talk a little bit more about um, some of these things that kind of, you know, didn't get the highest scores. I do wanna say that it would be, you know, beneficial for us to get to that point where we're able to, to really describe, you know, um, I think I've heard it here from Noah and from you, trustee, uh, I mean, President Vettis, that we get elected to set policy. You know, I think if every ACCT, um, you know, program that I've been uh attending essentially lets us know that. So you know, for me, it's, it's also important that if, you know, the majority of the board or at least we have consensus that, you know, there's um a specific policy or program that we would like to implement, um, you know, and I can definitely understand the chancellor having um his uh or hers own uh idea of what that policy can, and I, and I absolutely believe in that the chancellor is our guiding light and hey, maybe we can't do it this way, maybe we can do it that way. But to get to those specifics of how we can get there would be very helpful to us. Um, and again, I'll put it in a clear point. If we're not willing to develop, let's say, our own land to build some student housing. And again, I only point to student housing because student housing is there uh many times mentioned in this list. Then what, what can we do? And do we have a timeline for implementation and who are the, the parties involved? And I think that would really, um, I believe, kind of put us at ease instead of having the overarching uh topic. So, so I, I do welcome some clarity, um, and obviously, you know, trustee Moreno just mentioned we've, I, and I wasn't part of it, but I, you know, I've heard we, we've discussed this many, many times before. But if there were actually clarity to say, okay, we can actually do this and this is what we're gonna do and this is the timeline, I think a lot of these numbers would, would get a little bit higher. Some of us rated them low because it's, it, it is, at least in the topic of student housing, obscure and kind of mixed messaging. So I think student, uh trustee Hironimo, I don't want you to be discouraged. Uh, you know, this is just part of what, what we appreciate from this conversation. Um, and the fact that you just also let us know about some of your thoughts. Uh, but I think that, 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 that's where I would like to go because it's also not fair to the chancellor that there's a lot of mixed messaging uh from us as trustees. So just wanted to kind of clarify that issue.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing other hands, let me, oh chancellor, uh, comments here and then uh we're moving to the next part of this process.
Yes, I thank you, uh, President Vettis. If I may just make a few observations. One is, this is going to, this is foreshadowing what I believe is going to be an excellent conversation uh with the board on February the 6th. So as we start to shape our 2021 aboard goals, wanted to point out a few things. Although we, we assessed the highest if you uh categories and then, and then the lowest categories. It's been the time discussing ways to improve uh the, the lower ranked areas. I wanted to remind the board that we had about 50 plus different areas that we asked you to assess under the four general strategic priorities of ensuring district sustainability, addressing student basic needs, creating greater equity and inclusion. And then the newest uh and, and necessary strategic priority number four of the COVID-19 response, eat the, and racial equity and social justice. So I, I didn't want the board to lose sight that there was a lot of other materials in the middle. It was, they were ranked, you know, okay by, by you all and your assessment of there. So I wanted to point that out. The other thing I wanted to point out was that of the, when the board put all these together in September of 2019, today we find ourselves in January 2021. That's about 15 or so uh months. We've been in a pandemic for 10 of those months. So two thirds of our time together has been trying to work through this major pivot. Um, and we're still not over it yet. So I wanted to, wanted to point that out only in terms of context, not whether or not the, the goals in your view were achieved or not. Thirdly, this is important for me because in putting together the board goals document, um, I attempted to try to answer whether or not I believe we completed or did not complete some of these goals. And, 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 and I wanted to point out this congruence between our, by checking off saying not completed or in progress uh in, in some of these lower ranked areas because of, obviously, we didn't have the opportunity to address those in such a way that was a timely or um that was, that, that was satisfying uh because of the other uh matters that we had to pay attention to. So, so I wanted to not lose sight that if the, uh, the board goals document, and I'll resurrect the subject again on February the 6th, because I'd like to get to a point where that's the document that you can refer to as to whether or not we believe as an administration that we achieve the goal or not. It's our self-assessment of that. So I wanted to, to point that, that out in, in, and uh, and this, and to say that could be done better um and with uh additional evidence, then I'd like to do so. Because for example, we did have evidence on a Southwest college, our plans for adult learners and non-credit and adulted. And, and I take that as my responsibility of not explaining that clearly enough when we did the review on December the 12th or not documenting it that in, in a way that was easily accessible to you. So that, that's how I'm informed uh by some of your responses as well. But lastly, I will simply, simply point to that the items that the board rated themselves lower were really on future-oriented items, that is assets and future development using our, you know, using the, 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 you know, land and other assets that the district has to assess its future fiscal health and whatnot. So I, I simply wanted to leave uh this discussion with asking the board, and it's a rhetorical question. On some of these matters related to housing and other assets, do we want to do so as a revenue generator for the district or as a service to students? Uh, because both of those are different models, one that generates revenue uh and then the second one that provides a service. And when we provide a service, we may have to do that uh by subsidizing it. Uh, because right now there is no model that provides a, a service that generates revenue um for the district. We haven't found that sweet spot. So we have to think about what our priorities are. And if we're willing to subsidize something like housing, something like other assets that we might have to provide support to students. And so in the housing matter, while we didn't build housing, we did get after it in addressing student basic needs and building a multitude of, of, of partnerships so that the unhoused, students who are homeless and are homeless, secure, food insecure, technology is secure, have met their needs. And of course, you rated those areas much higher. So simply wanted to leave you with that. It's a great discussion. Uh, again, I appreciate all your thoughts, but it's very, very instructive to me um as to how we communicate and the documents in the tool that we put together to demonstrate whether we hit these goals or not. So thank you all for your very thoughtful uh comments and, and this is foreshadowing an excellent uh conversation on February the 6th. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, trustee Buellner, was that a new hand or?
No, it's absolutely new hand. I, 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 I'm, I'm excited to respond to, to, to the, to the, to the chancellor. Um, what caught, um, that, that, I, I really like the way you framed that chancellor. And, and here's what I would say, and I'm only speaking for, for, for me and, and my mind, right? Um, is that, that ultimately, because we've, we've muddled through the housing component discussion. And to be fair, and I've said this before, we've moved forward with the partnerships that we identified 15 months ago that we were, that we wanted to do, right? So some of our goals with student housing, we've begun to move. We tiptoed into the, into the, um, the discussion, right? However, in terms of that discussion, and I'm, and I'm gonna say it for, for me, is that absolutely, as we look at student, staff, but I'll say student right now, service and faculty and staff housing, service as well. But in terms of the subsidy, because you know, I don't want folks to, who are listening to think, oh my God, it's going to come from our, the money that comes from students, right? What we're talking about is developing a model that includes community subsidy as part of the performa in order to bring the level of cost down where we know students can actually pay, which is approximately 250, 50 to $300. And that community subsidy can come from different models. It can come from additional government foundations or the relationships that we have, that we, that we have. So I just, uh, because that subsidy scares people, you know, oh my God, we're gonna take classes away from people. And, and no, that doesn't mean that at all. And, and I, I don't think the chancellor meant that at all. But I wanted to offer some of that, some of that clarity in order to bring, again, make the performa um, uh functional and doable and sustainable. Thank you, that's it.
Um, and, and then really quick, I had my, my hand up too. I, I, yeah, I mean, I think chancellor, let's, let's look at what can come forward and what are some of the, there's so many models, certainly models certainly models that we don't have to encumber any costs whatsoever, simply just being a partner. Um, and, and I do have to say that, you know, I give credit, um, where credit is due. And if we wouldn't have had these partnerships with nonprofits, to this day, we wouldn't really have done anything on relief for our uh, homeless uh, student population, um, except that we were lucky that we were approached by um, by some of these housing nonprofits that, you know, were willing to work with us. So I do, I do think that I don't want to scare people away to trustee Bueno's point where basically people are saying, oh my God, they're gonna take our land. We're gonna then use money that could go to faculty, that could go to students. No, th- this isn't at all, not, not even iota of truth. There are models that we can all agree to. Um, you know, I just met recently with the California Community College League uh, foundation that uh, it will present to us, uh, and, and Ms. Velos is putting that together, uh, models that do not encumber any cost on the community college, not even maintenance costs. Um, so I, I do think that there are models that we can stand behind as trustees, as a district. We just need to look at them more and, you know, not all of us have that type of training when it comes to understanding these models. I mean, we're, we're lucky to have, you know, some of us that have worked in this industry uh, before. I, I certainly don't. I, you know, I could, I could tell you more about uh, construction than I can, uh, any type of building for uh, or uh, doing partnerships with student housing. So I look forward to looking at models to come forward to the trustees so that we can finally agree on maybe one or two of them. And then, you know, see if we could get some uh, stakeholder buy-in from, you know, faculty, from colleges, from our students on some of these that we could possibly implement in the future. So.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think that concludes the comments for this part. Our, our next section chancellor, Noah.
Are we frozen?
No, we're getting unmuted here.
Oh.
Okay, I'm confused. I thought I had to, um, if we're moving into the chancellor evaluation, is that what you're saying?
No, no, just, I just wanted to do the wrap-up, wrap-up comment here. I know, I know Francisco, you did, you did your summary.
I did. I did, yeah. Part one, correct, this is conclude part one.
Yeah, uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, first, um, uh, we definitely can share uh, data about enrollment trends and I will, I will have the team send that. Um, we also have collected some information and have written some articles about institutions that are seeing enrollment gains and how that's occurring and what the programs are that they're using and happily share that uh, with the board also. I would just say, if you think back, uh, the session that we did on September twelfth, which was really to look at your strategic plan and to receive feedback from the chancellor uh, across the board on, on where things stood and what kinds of data or benchmarks were available on those. I would say that the board should revisit that uh, as it moves forward along with this, the results of this current board self-evaluation and ask itself some strategic questions about um, the relative prioritization of those items now as you go forward. And to the extent uh, that some of the concerns raised had to do with really a better understanding of where things really stand. Um, um, and not uh, necessarily using the pandemic as kind of a screen for things that didn't occur, is for the board to really uh, help develop uh, exactly what metrics uh, it would like to see with respect to some of the items, particularly those that the board feels have not proceeded as, as well or as far forward as the board would like. So I just offer that as a suggestion as to the work forward. I guess chancellor, you have a session on February sixth. Uh, be a good opportunity, I think, to bring those documents back together and uh, to have a discussion about how you will make the adjustments and kind of maybe reprioritize some of these now. Uh, because the chancellor rightly points out, it's been many, many months since those board goals were first developed and articulated and less than five months transpired before the pandemic hit. So there's a lot of other things that came up along the way that were never anticipated. So but uh, with that, let me just thank uh, the board again for the opportunity to work with you on this and for uh, uh, tasking A C C T uh, to work with you on this board self-assessment.
Okay, thank you, Noah. Um, colleagues, I, I wanted to, um, you know, we're about, now we're in twenty minutes or so into this. Uh, we're gonna mark our, our, our next session, which is actually um, in, in a closed session, the chancellor evaluation. Um, so what I'd like to do is see if we can uh, move into closed session. Um, but I wanted to give everybody an opportunity for a little bio break and copy break if, if needed, so we, we can um, one, if there's no objections to recess into closed. And I'm looking at all uh, hands and marks and um, um, we'll, we'll recess to close, but we'll reconvene in ten minutes. So um, approximately ten fifty-five, uh, give or take a minute.
Do we have to change, uh?
Yes.
Do we have to leave this meeting?
Yes, we do. Yeah, there is a separate uh, uh, link that was sent to us uh, uh, by uh, Luca, I believe. Uh, and uh, if you have any sort of issues or questions, let us know and then uh, we'll make sure you get that because that, that part is in closed session and then uh, um, we'll come back out with a quick report uh, and an adjourn for what needs to be reported. And then uh, there should be about an hour or so break um, uh, for um, before the committee start. Um, I did, uh, in, in, I think it was trustee Bonner, he's always the one who's focused on food. Since some of us may actually be all day in these kinds of meetings, um, and it has been uh, sort of the uh, past practice of the board, especially on these long days, um, uh, that, uh, that food is provided. Um, uh, we're gonna build on trustee, uh, Hoff, Hoff's generosity of the past meetings and, and try to make it uh, some regular practice here, especially on the days that we begin at nine and some of us will be on all the way through six thirty. It's really some, sometimes difficult to get in a kitchen or do this kinds of thing. So if it's an option, we'd like to be utilized, um, uh, you're welcome to utilize that. Okay, so, um, so with that, I see no objections. Uh, we'll move into closed and then uh, reconvene in about ten minutes. Um, uh, and we'll kick off the chancellor's portion of the evaluation.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to be in this, this closed section, uh, session?
No, not, not this one. This was the, one of the employee um, scenario. So, uh, student trustee, thank you uh, so much. And I know, uh, I think we're gonna be in touch very shortly because we have our upcoming student uh, elections and all those kinds of things that uh, are coming forward to the agenda. And I know we also have a resolution uh, that uh, you've submitted forward to us that uh, we have to talk about agendizing at our next regular, our, our business meeting, right? So, um, so that's exciting. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a nice day.
Okay.
Cr- Crystal, can you send me the link for closed session again, please?
Yes, I'll forward it right now.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Crystal.